Okay, so we're finally getting started. So, good morning. This is a public hearing at the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. Today's date is December 18, 2017. The time is now 9:28 a.m. This hearing is scheduled to be held from 9:00 to 11:00. We're starting a little bit late. We were waiting for our stenographer. We're now proceeding with videotape. We are going -- we scheduled the hearing from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. We're obviously starting late. We'll run over as much as necessary. I don't think it'll be necessary, but everybody who's shown up here will have their opportunity to speak. So my name is Diana Zalff, Associate General Counsel with the department. And with me are three members of the Bureau of Child Care. So we have James Morris, Director of Field Operations; Chanelle Bolton, Senior Advisor for Early Childhood Education; and Monica Pollak as Acting Assistant Commissioner. So the purpose of today's hearing is to elicit comments from anybody who wishes to speak to assist us in considering a proposed new rule. This is a proposal to amend Title 24 of the Rules of the City of New York by adding a new chapter, Chapter 3, regarding performance summary cards to be issued to childcare programs. By way of background, we in the department are being required to issue these cards pursuant to a state law recently enacted by the legislature. That would be New York State Social Services Law, Section 390J. A copy of the notice of intention to implement this change was published in the city record, and a copy of the first page of the notice has been provided to the stenographer or will be provided to the stenographer in this case, and that will be included in the record of today's hearing. So three people pre-registered to speak at today's hearing, and anybody else who is not pre-registered who would like to speak is welcome to do so as well. So, okay, if would -- hi. Come on in, have a seat. So we're gonna take people who are pre-registered first, as I said. So if you're here and you're pre-registered, would you please come up in order closest And would you start by identifying yourself for the record?
Yes, I'm Dawn Heyward. H-E-Y-W-A-R-D. Deputy --
Okay, and please, would you face towards the --
No.
-- towards the camera and turn on your --
We can trust the button.
And turn on the button on your microphone, most important. You don't need to face towards the camera. We'll be back, we're good.
So, good morning. My name is Dawn Heyward, H-E-Y-W-A-R-D, Deputy Director for Early Childhood Education at East Side House Settlement.
Okay, and we'd love to hear your comments.
Okay, so I did bring my three copies on you have for the record.
Thank you.
I'm gonna start by saying, first of all, thank you for taking the time to hear our concerns. And one of the things that I really think is important is the safety and welfare of children. I've been an advocate for some 25 years in my career, and so it is in that vein that I come to you this morning. I'm really concerned about the new regulations and how it particularly impacts programs that are housed within New York City NYCHA complexes. And that is that all four of my centers that serve 209 children in totality are housed in NYCHA facilities in the South Bronx, particularly in the Mont Haven section, which is the poorest congressional district in the nation. And many of our children and families are immigrant families and depend on our services so that they can ensure that their children get the language acquisition and their literacy skills that will help them to be successful in school and throughout their educational careers. I will say this, that only one in 10 children in the Mont Haven section of the Bronx can read at grade level by grade three, and we recognize the significance of that. And so Head Start, particularly East Side House Settlement, has been in the community as a staple for 50 years. And so it is with that vein that I solicit your consideration of the following. First, that having the new regulation would create an undue and hostile work environment for CBOs like East Side House. And when I say hostile work environment, I'm talking about the fact that we could not survive if we were not where we are in terms of what our contract pays per dollar per child, the cost of the market rate of real estate, and the fact that we are leaseholders and sometimes for no cost in NYCHA facilities. And so that impacts us, particularly because the current system in NYCHA is backlog, it's inefficient. Many times we wait for months for a resolution to an issue. And I've given the case example. I've included pictures. I've included a timeline for you of a very significant infrastructure concern that we had at one of our locations. I'm not gonna give you the whole story, but I'm gonna give you the citing points. There was some significant structural damage to the building. It was caused by a heating issue that was underneath the basement of the building. The temperature in the classrooms was 140 degrees. We had to shut down. We were closed by the New York City Fire Department because it was a safety hazard to children. The steam was so excessive that it was coming out of the vents in the children's playground at eye level to children, which created a significant safety issue. When I got there, which was in May of 2015, it was the first, really, issue that I addressed as the leadership of the program. And it took me two weeks short of one year to have it resolved. That means for 11 months and two weeks, there was an unsafe condition in a facility that I didn't have control over. I've included a timeline, including all of the people in the chain of commands and the organizations that I had to interface with and advocate with so that we could get it resolved. And with that advocacy and dedicated staff, a director of facilities whose job it was every day to go to NYCHA, every day to bump it up the chain, every day to go to ACS and to advocate for our children and families, it took us 11 months and two weeks to get a resolution. I think that the scorecard would unduly put hardship on the organization. I would venture to say that if we had a report card at that time, we would not have passed and gotten a failing grade, and rightfully so. I would have agreed that we should have gotten a failing grade in terms of our facility and the maintenance of it, but it was out of our control. It was solely at the hands of NYCHA, who has limited resources, has an inefficient record of timely repairs, oftentimes will close tickets without ever having come to my center. One of the DOH regulations is that no work can be done while a child is in the building. They often will come out during program hours or when we are identified on our permit, and they have been there for 50 years, so they know who we are. They will come when they know they cannot do the work so that they can close the ticket legitimately. So that poses an issue. In terms of --
Excuse me, I just wanna interrupt for a moment. I really appreciate your testimony. We have a five limit --
Okay.
A five-minute time limit for speakers. I just wanted to tell you, we have your written testimony. We will read every word of it and consider it, but I have to ask you to limit your speaking time.
Okay, so I'll get to the possible solutions.
Great.
And what I'm proposing is that early learn contracts would include an allocation for facility maintenance direct to the vendor or to the CBO as a means that we can then control the quality and conditions of our buildings. Another possible solution would be for the federal and state funding allocated to NYCHA to be directly allocated and prescribed for the infrastructure and repairs that need to happen, and that there should be an assessment of each facility based on that, and the money's put in the budget for that. I will say this, based on what you've heard, based on the pictures that I've seen, and these are rhetorical questions, but just something to leave you with, as I conclude my testimony, based on what you've seen and heard, you allow your child to attend a center that looked like what those pictures look like. For those of you who are parents, I'm asking you not to penalize agencies that at this point are in NYCHA buildings and don't control the conditions of those buildings. If you move forward with the proposal, agencies will be unduly judged in terms of our academic rigor. Our children are far above the DOE system in terms of their competencies and school readiness when they leave my building. I would venture to say that families would be impacted. Children would be impacted if we were put out of business. And I believe that this proposal has the potential to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, please identify yourself for the record, and then we'd be glad to hear your comments.
Sure. My name is Lisa Caserole. I'm the Senior Policy Analyst for the Daycare Council of New York. You just heard from one of our members. I don't think I can possibly beat that in terms of what she said, but I will speak on behalf of other members in the same situation. We have a history that goes back not quite this far. We're the largest membership organization for childcare programs in the nonprofit sector, going back to World War II. In the last early learn RFP, those programs that were located in NYCHA facilities were in a position where they had to bid for those settings to be able to stay where they'd been for many years. And the reason that many of the providers who were responding to that RFP wanted to be in the NYCHA facilities was because that's where the low-income kids are, and that's where the most likely chance of being able to serve those kids are, rather than trying to compete in gentrified neighborhoods. As time goes forward, they'll become increasingly important places to maintain stability. I have in my testimony details having to do with the New York City Comptroller's Audit from 2015 that clarifies exactly how bad the situation is in terms of delays, so I won't read that. But I do wanna say that right now, with our membership, whether the problem is plumbing, electrical work, toxic mold, the average repair currently takes at least two months to complete. This is a short summary from another provider in Brooklyn. "For years, I've struggled with an impossible process in dealing with maintenance issues in NYCHA. Because the buildings are generally 40 years older, there's a constant flow of problems from leaking toilets to water faucets that won't shut off, water dripping from apartments above us, and even exterior doors that will not close properly. In every case, we are required to follow the same procedure of reporting the problem, getting a work order number assigned to the case, then waiting and waiting and waiting. Occasionally, a NYCHA maintenance person will come for an inspection but not repair anything. Oftentimes, when a week or more has gone by, we will get a call and be informed as the repair has been completed or that we never reported a problem. Having a work order number becomes meaningless in such circumstances. If the Department of Health, DOHMH, comes by for an unannounced inspection, we will be given a warning for unsafe conditions. If we fail to correct the problem, we can be fined, and we are periodically, for problems that are not our responsibility. Add to this the fact that sometimes we will be informed that there will be no water or no heat starting in an hour after the children have already been dropped off by their parents. This is unfair to parents and children and is unsettling to our teaching professionals. I've had to deal with such problems for many years, and nothing seems to change the casual indifference to problems that seriously impact the health and safety of our children. A change is needed." So I'll just read our Daycare Council's summary statement. "The proposed inclusion of the history of DOHMH violations in the annual posting of performance summary cards is appropriately focused on keeping children safe. Parents and community members should have access to the health and safety records of early childhood education providers. However, our members are and have been doing everything they can to expedite essential NYCHA facility repairs and should not be penalized for the fact that their efforts do not yield sufficient results. We must find a way to effectively address the longstanding inadequacy of federal NYCHA maintenance funding. If we do not, the addition of a new Chapter 3 could have serious consequences for the ongoing utilization of early learn programs where providers have worked hard to maintain operations in facilities that are near the families who need them. Our members are relying on you to solve this problem. If the Daycare Council can provide further assistance in this matter, please do not hesitate to call on us."
Thank you very much.
So I just have to tell you how many other members we're -- these are two stories, but there must be -- there's at least 30 other members, but this is their primary agenda. It's impacting the utilization, which is underscored right now based on the rising incomes in this city.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, do we have another person waiting to speak who pre-registered prior to today's hearing? Would you please come up?
Good morning.
Good morning. Please identify yourself for the record.
I'm Anna O'Cardy.
Okay, great. And what's your affiliation?
I'm a daycare director.
Okay.
Me and my mom both, we have our own sectors in Belros and Forest Hills. And as directors and educators, our number-one job is the safety of our children. I am unaware if whomever proposed this rule has had any actual hands-on experience in a childcare facility. I'm very concerned that this department is treating us as if we are a pub, bar, or a restaurant. It is quite the opposite. For example, we now have to take a day away from making sure our centers are being ran properly to pay or dispute a ticket for a minor violation at oath, because we no longer receive time to make any corrections. Operating a daycare is a constant obligation, whom many, if not all of us, take pride in. I am completely opposed to this new rule for many reasons. As it is, staying in compliance is already very difficult for us. We are rarely notified in advance of any new rules and regulations. In fact, recently, I had to deal with an inspector who had his own agenda and rules that are clearly not in Article 47. In return, we need clarity regarding new regulations. When we have general questions to help ensure proper operations, it is very difficult for us to get that assistance from the department. How many childcare directors knew about this new rule being implemented today? Our licensers sure do not inform us. I want nothing more than to be in compliance at all times, yet I am treated as if I'm operating a bar and not a childcare facility. I offer my community a due diligence by running a safe, warm, and loving environment for their children, though I am now to be penalized even more by being graded by a system and a department who I cannot get any straight answers from. We are not serving burgers. We are looking over children's most precious gifts, their children. I should be able to contact someone from the Department of Health immediately to help me with a problem or issue. This rule only adds more stress to our programs when our main goal is to make sure our children are number-one priority. Please stop treating us as bar owners and help us. Come into our centers and explain new rules. We need to be in compliance, especially for the sake of our children. There needs to be a better open communication lines between daycares and the Department of Health. We need your help, not your scrutiny. Please help us. We need your help.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that's three speakers. I'm assuming those are the three people who pre-registered, or anybody else here who hasn't had a chance to speak who would like to. Please come up. Please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Lois Lee, and I'm with Chinese American Planning Council. And we have early childhood centers throughout Brooklyn and Queens. Here we have after-school programs. And all of these programs are permitted by DOHMH, you know, FASAC and OHR, Child Care. So it is true, and listening to Lisa and this person behind me too, we are over-regulated. And Governor Cuomo made that emergency measure about that we have to -- director have to be on-site from 8:00 to 6:00. We're always there from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. But even to take time off to come here, I have to make sure there's a certified teacher at all times. So now, of course, it's hard to get certified teachers, so we use the group call of school professionals. And I was at a DOE UPK meeting with the operations, all of us in Queens, who were at an operations training meeting. And we brought up the fact that the people that was -- they were recommending us to use school professionals. The school professionals' people were not certified teachers. And we find that disheartening, because why are they recommending this program if they don't have the background checks necessary? And the teacher that twice I used school professionals, she couldn't even sing the ABC song. How could you not know the ABC song? Everyone in that room that we had our hearing, I mean, not the hearing, the general training meeting, they said that the school professionals, they rely on the assistant teacher to be the teacher, because the school professionals don't know the routines. They're getting paid $160 a day, yet the assistant teacher's doing all the work. So we just find that it's unfair when we're looking for certified teachers. And then the Department of Health came to that program. That certified teacher was not a certified teacher set by school professional, and she had to go to oath to pay the fine, you know? But it wasn't her fault. She asked for school professionals. So we brought that up to the DOE and said, you've got to do some more oversight, because it's unfair that we are being penalized for something that we try to take care of. So I no longer use school professionals. And it's finding it very hard to find certified teachers when we have to be out the building to go to meetings and to go to places. Of course, the teachers will always say, you know, we make sure that there's adequate child-staff ratio. It's that certified teacher component is quite hard to do from 8:00 to 6:00. So that was my one thing. And, you know, I like the idea that we do have a performance summary. I have it hanging up on my wall, how the fans can check on us. But it is, the summons part is -- the warning is good, because as she said, you give us time to make the minor corrections. It's always something so small, even if you correct it on the spot, they don't accept it, you know? So then they send you to oath, and you get the summons. I'll give you an example. I had the Department of Health come, and they looked at my windows, and it's locked in at four inches. Well, they used their tape measure, and they said it's five inches. So I said, can I see your tape measure? It started at one, and it didn't start at zero. I said, do you know from zero to one is one inch? You're looking at two inches now. She still put me down for a violation. And I said, can you use another ruler? I'm trying to show you. Your ruler is wrong. Still the violation. So then I went, I took the violation, I went to the Department of Health, and I insist on speaking to the supervisor, and I say, can you please take out all your tape measures and show me your tape measure? And what does it start with? One, and not zero. So how could I, why can't they understand logic? It should not have been written down as a violation. But there was no violation. So it's the thing about these inspectors, I'm very respectful, I'm not yelling at the person, even though I thought it was a little crazy that I got this violation, and other small violations. She said I didn't have emergency lights, because she was looking for those round emergency lights, the old-fashioned ones. We had emergency lights. The word says "emergency lights," and it was a newer model, because we have a brand-new building. It just built last year. She gave me a violation for no emergency lights. There's something that's not right here. I don't know how to fix the system. It's inspectors not understanding when we have a valid point. You know, we should not have gotten these violations. Now with the new ruling, I'm so scared that we're going to be closed down, that I have to have the summons, I have to run over to oath. That warning period is a very important period. It just can't be like on the spot, you get a summons. You know, so my health inspection is tomorrow with the same woman, and I just wanted to come. And I told her I'm coming today to speak about this, and I hope I really have a good, you know, performance survey. But, you know, I know these rules. Been doing this for 46 years. I memorize Code 47. But it's just that unreasonable logic behind the violations. That's all I have to say.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate everybody coming in. Would you like to speak as well?
Good morning.
Good morning. Please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Macey O'Cardy, and I have the daycare in Belros. And one of my daughter that has one also in our Forest Hills. And I agree with everything that woman had said. When the sanitarium, they call them, when they come into a center, they're just like, they're not listening. They're just, this is wrong. This, what's wrong? This is wrong, and you should know it. How are we gonna know? Tell me what article it is in. Article 47. I go and get Article 47. I go to bed at night with Article 47. I sleep with it, literally, I'm not kidding you. Because I wanna know the rules and the regulations, and I wanna be in compliance. I'm doing this for 30 years, you know? I think it's important that, back in the day, the Board of Health, Department of Health, we used to, they used to give us workshops to train people how to do certain things, to be in regulation. That was so important. And right now, in Article 47, we have that our girls do 15 hours per year per licensing, something pertaining to childcare. Well, I make my girls do 30 hours per year, because I'm, you know, I let them do 30 hours per year, so that they get to know what we're doing, and what daycare, and what childcare rule is about. Because these are very, very precious jewels that we have in our school, and we want nothing but the best for them. So I hope that we can fix it.
Thank you very much for --
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Absolutely. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
I would.
Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning. Please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Greg Rettow. I'm the Chief Program Officer for the Samuel Field Y in the Central Queens Y in Queens. And I just wanted to, although I thought I was making good moves of moving off the Lower East Side and out of NYCHA-run childcare centers, there's challenges with running private facilities as well when it comes to operating with the city. We have two facilities that we are trying to make major repairs on using city capital funds. After seven years, we finally have received our first payment on one facility, and after a four-month delay regarding some bond with the general contractor, we're able to start the work on the second facility. I also was able to turn on the heat for the first time at our third facility on Friday. So as you can imagine, with the last few weeks of weather, that was less than ideal. And it becomes this constant game of trying to figure out, is there something that we can do with heaters and space heaters and blowers so that we don't have to turn these children away and very much make a difficult situation for their parents? But the Department of Buildings had many, many, many things to say about the work that was being done on a gas line going into that building. And it literally has taken us the better part of the last three months to rectify that situation and finally get final DOE sign-off and therefore Con Ed sign-off to turn on the heat on Friday. So whether it be a public building or a NYCHA building, or whether it be a privately-owned daycare center, there are a multitude of challenges that come with interfacing with the city, regardless of whether you own the property or not. And I just wanted to make that point. And I also would like to reiterate what everyone said in terms of the approach, and that things could be much more helpful. Inspectors could certainly be much more advised as to what the real rules and regulations are. In Article 47, I recently went to oath, looking at approximately, I think, 39 violations on staff files alone could have been, I think, a total fine of $70,000-some. We just got the ruling that it was $1,400, because there were so many items within those sanctions or sightings that were actually inaccurate when you sat down and looked at the paperwork with the arbitrator at oath. But again, taking half of my day to make that happen in a multi-service organization with eight program divisions is really problematic when I really didn't need to be there at all, clearly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your testimony. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Okay, there being nobody else who would like to speak, we're gonna adjourn this hearing. The time is now 9:57 a.m., and we're gonna come back shortly before 11:00, just to see if anybody else has arrived who would like to speak. So for now, we're adjourned. You're welcome to go. You're welcome to stay. Okay, we're back on the record. This is a continued public hearing. We have one additional speaker who showed up. The time is now 10:57 a.m. And would you please start by saying your name and your affiliation for the record, and then we'll be happy to hear your comments.
Sure. Good morning. My name is Lorraine Koch. I am the Site Manager at Atlantic Avenue Early Learning Center from the Agency of Brooklyn Community Services. We are a childcare center. center. We also have a universal 3K program. We have reviewed the upcoming performance summary cards, and we, while in agreement with making information available to the public, we do have some concerns. Some of the main concerns are that the information that is going to be placed on these cards are not really an accurate description of how the center is run and our performance. If we have the number of teaching staff currently employed, that is an issue that we face with hiring because of DOH regulations and compliance with DOE regulations. Many times, we struggle with acquiring a certified teacher because while this is not directly a DOH issue, but the Department of Education requires certified teachers, and they are somewhat in competition with childcare centers in a sense that the teachers work for the Department of Education, and they go to work for the Department of Education due to salary that we, in essence, cannot provide. And then we get written up in tribunals and hearings because of these violations that we have gained. In addition, permit suspensions and other things that are reflected based off of light violations that are not really the center's call. It depends on the agency's maintenance and structure. The supervisor will... Like, our center is affiliated, or we went from the building above us, Mahan Management. And so recently, we suffered a water shutdown. And it was last minute. We were informed last minute. That could have been something that the Department of Health violated us for, but it was not under our control. It was under the building. And then their supervisor didn't get in contact with us until 8:15 that morning, and our center opens at 8:00 a.m. And so these violations, such as these, light fixtures, et cetera, paint peeling the floor, these are violations that occur. They're written, documented, and we get cited for. And we, you know, are working our best and doing our best to work with our agency, but they're not our... We don't have any control over them. In addition to teacher hiring, we have control, somewhat control, over teacher hiring. We do interviews. We conduct interviews. We push. For one example, currently, we have a teacher who has come from Georgia, and her, she's certified from Georgia. There's no reciprocity between Georgia's certification and New York State certification. However, DOE is okay with us working with her, and is working in, while her certification is pending. Department of Health has denied her. And so we are, again, suffering from the same issue of looking for another teacher, being out of compliance with teacher staff ratio, teacher-child ratio, rather, being out of compliance with having the certified teacher. And in fact, she's one of the best teachers that we've interviewed. And so while DOE is okay with her, DOH, and so one thing that we have asked from DOJ, from DOH, is to get the regulations, if they could just work together to get the regulations to help us, that would do us good justice.
Thank you very, very much for your comments. We appreciate you coming in. Okay, time is now 11:01 a.m. This hearing is now closed.